Good evening. I now call the public portion of this meeting of the Standing Committee on Economic Development and Environment to order. I'm Katrina Noakaby and I'm the MLA for Great Slave and will be chairing tonight's meeting. Today, the Standing Committee on Economic Development and Environment is holding a public hearing on Private Members Bill 29, Resource Royalty Information Disclosure Statute Amendment Act. If I could just remind everyone to mute their microphones, please, that would be great. Today's meeting is being livestreamed on the Assembly's social media channels. And due to the evolving COVID-19 situation in the Northwest Territories, as well as in compliance with the Chief Public Health Officers Gathering Restrictions in Yellowknife, the Legislative Assembly Building is closed to the public. Members of the public have been asked to contact the committee clerk for call-in information to join the meeting this evening. The Standing Committee on Economic Development and Environment will hear from the public, the Department of Industry, Tourism and Investment, and then receive a presentation from the sponsor of the bill, MLA O'Reilly. As a standing committee, it is our role to review legislation introduced in the House. The committee review stage gives stakeholders and the public the opportunity to provide their opinions on whether they support the bill or not. It also allows the public to suggest changes for committee to consider, bringing forward as amendments that they think might help improve the bill. Committee gathers input from the public in the form of written submissions or public presentations to committee during meetings such as this one. Here is the members' plain language summary of the bill. This bill would make small changes to the Mineral Resources Act, which is not yet in force, the Northwest Territories Lands Act and the Petroleum Resources Act, to allow for the sharing of mining, oil and gas royalty information held by the Minister of Industry, Tourism and Investment with regular MLAs and Indigenous governments. This sharing would be done in ways to protect any confidential information as specified by the minister. This would better enable informed discussion and input by regular MLAs and Indigenous governments into policy, regulations and legislation for the management of mining, oil and gas. The broader issue of public access to royalty information is not addressed in this bill. I would like to remind all members and witnesses to please direct all comments and questions to myself as the chair to help keep the meeting organized and running smoothly. Please wait to be recognized by the chair before speaking. I will now ask members to introduce themselves for the record, starting with Member Johnson.
Good evening. I'm Ryland Johnson. I'm the MLA for Yellowknife.
Ron Bonnet Rouge, MLA Detto.
Caitlin Cleveland, MLA for Kam Lake.
Thank you very much, members. We do not have anyone on the phone at this time. Our first presentation will be from the Executive Director of the Northwest Territories and Nunavut Chamber of Mines, Mr. Tom Hofer. Welcome, Tom. Please introduce any other presenters and proceed with your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay. Well, thank you very much for the invitation to appear tonight. And thank you very much to the committee and for staff to allow us to go first. I know Ben Sun will thank you as well because he's got a hockey game down east and, you know, they're a couple of hours ahead. So that was sort of important for us as well. So thank you for allowing that consideration. So let me just introduce who is on our team tonight. First, we have Mr. Kenny Reptash, who is our Chamber's Vice President for the Northwest Territories. And in his day job is the President of Nahanni Construction, based here in Yellowknife. Second, we have Mr. Ben Chalmers, who is the Senior Vice President of the Mining Association of Canada, which is a national mining association for the country. And amongst other things, Ben is responsible for their towards Sustainable Mining Initiative. And he will speak to some other legislation out there as we go through the presentation. And I'm Tom Hofer, Executive Director of the NWT and Nunavut Chamber of Mines. And of course, we champion on behalf of mineral resource development in the NWT and also in Nunavut. So we have two slides in our presentation that Ben and I will speak to, and then all three of us will be available for questions. So I can just get you to go to slide two. Or am I to do that?
Nope, please go ahead. We've got it on the screen.
Okay. So these are our industry recommendations. First, that the NWT government, together with federal and Indigenous governments, need to take many constructive actions to reverse the decline in the minerals industry and mitigate the impending loss of benefits it provides to maintain our private sector economy. And of course, all of the benefits it provides for all stakeholders. And I think this is pretty well-known subject. It's why increasing exploration and development is in the mandate of this assembly. And of course, we're concerned that actions are taken to turn this around. So Bill 29 does not address this. We believe this bill is duplicative of other legislation. It requires further reporting burden and it requires companies to share sensitive and competitive information. If there is little or no minerals industry in the NWT, in fact, there will only be lower to no royalty revenues. So I think it's important that we make sure that we turn around more mining so we get the royalties. It's our recommendation that the current system, which protects business confidentiality, should be maintained. Bill 29 should not be supported or passed for the reasons that we have provided. And let me speak to those now if you just go to the next slide. Okay, our first point is that in consultation with our industry members, we find that Bill 29 is duplicative of other legislation, and particularly the Extractive Sector Transparency Management Act. So this is a federal act that was brought into being under a lot of work by the mineral industry, in fact. And I'm going to ask Ben to speak to that act and a bit of its history and what it does today and how we see this current proposed Private Members Bill fitting with that. So can turn it over to you, please, Ben?
Please go ahead, Mr. Chalmers.
Sure, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here today with all of you. I wish I could be there in person. I wish conditions allowed us to be there in person. So the Extractive Sector Transparency Measures Act is an important piece of legislation around Canadian mining and oil and gas for a number of reasons. Not the least of which, it represents the result of a two-year negotiation between civil society and the mining industry to come to a consensus on transparency around payments to governments as a result of mineral extraction. The history of this is that an NGO named Publish What You Pay Canada, which is a coalition NGO of a number of civil society organizations, approached us in 2012 with a suggestion that we should be able to find common ground on the appropriate level of detail to bring transparency to the kinds of payments that mining companies make to governments, not just in Canada but all over the world. This came on the heels of legislation in the US under the Dodd-Frank Act, as well as European Union directives that were later implemented in most European countries, the first of which was the UK. And so the ESTMA, Extractive Sector Transparencies Measures Act, is not only a consensus between civil society and the mining sector in Canada, it also represents an international consensus that brings consistent reporting around payments to governments in the US, or not the US because the legislation was never implemented, but in Canada, the EU and elsewhere. So what it does is that it requires annually mining companies and oil and gas companies to report on payments that they make to governments in a range of categories, including taxes, royalties and fees. Once a threshold is met, and that threshold is $100,000. So any payee, whether it's the government of the Northwest Territories, the government of British Columbia, for example, or the federal government or another jurisdiction outside of Canada, companies have to file a report to disclose those fees. So what it does for us is that it brings a factual set of data to the reporting landscape so that people can have factual conversations about mineral royalties and the taxation situation for our industry with a consistent set of trusted data. And in a way that is consistent and comparable across jurisdictions. So that's quite important to us. It's also important to note that there is one other jurisdiction in Canada that has done something similar. The Government of Quebec enacted legislation shortly after the federal government implemented legislation in 2014, I believe. The notable thing about that legislation is that the Quebec legislation basically mirrors the federal legislation. So there is one set of data that is reported. It means a company can file a report that satisfies obligations in Canada, in Quebec, in the EU and anywhere else that this kind of reporting is required. A duplicate piece of legislation that is not aligned with this international and national consensus risks having two sets of numbers out there that aren't consistent, increases the burden, probably makes it more difficult for those involved in looking at the data to know which data to work with. So I'll stop there. I've probably taken enough time, but I will stick around and answer more questions on that if there are any.
Thank you for that, Mr. Chalmers. I have to say you're actually one of the fastest presentations I've been part of since I've been on an MLA. So thank you for that. Oh, sorry. Okay, back to Tom then. Go ahead, Mr. Hofer.
Yeah, we're not done, so I'll try to be quick as well. So the second point that we find with Bill 29 is that it proposes unusual sharing of confidential tax information beyond government staff who have the responsibility and the systems to protect this business-sensitive financial information. So mineral royalties are essentially a profits tax. And they're calculated through a legislated formula that considers various factors that it could affect profits positively or negatively and differentially for one mine compared to another. So this includes sensitive confidential information such as market price. But in the case of diamonds, also the efficiency of an individual company's customer supply chains to maximize their own market price. It also considers business losses, capital investments, fuel costs, depreciation and amortization, and the various other taxes that companies must also pay. So in the NWT, for example, ice road costs, the cost of self-generating power and the property taxes up here and other costs associated with the acute infrastructure deficit are also some of the unique additional costs incurred by mine operators that are taken into consideration. Current NWT legislation recognizes and respects the need to protect such potentially sensitive business information. For example, under the current Northwest Territories mining regulations and under the upcoming Mineral Resources Act through the Access to Information and Protection of Privacy Act. So under current privacy laws, this detailed financial information is limited to the government staff responsible to use it for detailed tax calculations and who are obligated to safeguard it. The current legislation is designed to protect the public interest by requiring companies to follow the law in reporting to government the detailed information required for royalty calculation purposes. If enacted, this bill would unusually allow the release of tax information and sharing of other sensitive information beyond government staff who have that authority and responsibility to audit and assess company confidential information with politicians and Indigenous governments who do not have this responsibility. We say unusually as this is not the norm in other jurisdictions in Canada. So this broadening of the distribution of the information to a much larger group of people also substantially increases the likelihood of a breach in confidentiality requirements. Because of course, as the number of people who have the information increases, the level of confidentiality applied to the information concomitantly decreases. I'll jump to the third point, or sort of as part of that second point. Disconcertingly, this confidential and sensitive information is also then available to business competitors. The fourth point, it's being proposed before the GNO T has completed its study on resource royalties in the tax system. So there's already work that's being done by ITI, more fulsome work. There's already been some work with Price Waterhouse Coopers that they've done. But there's also more work that's being done and that will shed more light on how royalties are calculated and all of the details behind that. And so this really jumps the gun on that study. And then I'm going to just jump to the fifth point. It will not support the 19th Assembly's mandate to increase resource exploration and development and restore levels of investment, partnership, employment and growth in the NWT's economy. It's a very appropriate mandate action, given the circumstances that we're facing with our mineral resource industry and that so many other folks like the Conference Board of Canada and others have commented on. So mineral development continues to be the largest private sector contributor and annually adding hundreds of millions in business spending alone in addition to significant employment and taxes and community contributions. So we really need to keep that mineral potential being harnessed to keep sustaining the industry and even growing the industry to basically turn it around from where we are right now. However, for a variety of reasons, many of which we have already shared with the newly elected members of the 19th Assembly back in October 2019, the investment attractiveness of the NWT continues to decline. And over the last two years, we've seen mineral production take a significant drop of $900 million, for example. And exploration investment is still continuing flat at very low levels. What projects we have in the development pipeline are still in the advanced exploration to feasibility stages and are much smaller than the maturing diamond mines we expect them to replace. So proposing this highly unusual Bill 29 to reveal and share what is treated as confidential and sensitive business information in virtually all Canadian jurisdictions will not help rejuvenate the NWT's most important private sector industry. Respectfully, there are many more important actions that the Standing Committee, regular MLAs and cabinet can do to help reinvigorate the NWT's mineral industry. And candidly, men have come from the private member. So our industry recommendations, I don't need to repeat them again. They're on slide one. And so we really, we need the support of federal governments, the territorial government, indigenous governments to take actions to turn around the flagging mineral industry that we see. And Bill 29 does not address this. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hofer. I apologize for trying to cut you off there. It's just been a really, really long day. So thank you very much. Thank you very much for that. I'm just going to see if any of the committee members have questions for the chamber at this time. I'm not seeing any so far in the chat. Oh, Mr. Johnson, would you like to go ahead?
I don't really have questions at this time. I think I'll probably save my comments once I've heard everyone present. But no, I guess I do have one question is that, so committee is currently working with ITI on part of the royalty work. And we are, we are, that's a Price Waterhouse Cooper report. And I guess there's this weird problem that I can't quite figure out is that I get the concern raised about having two sets of numbers actually can complicate this more and having two sets of data. But we as committee have been going to ESTMA reports and then looking what we actually get as a government, and they don't align. And they don't align for a number of reasons and that there's delays and there's corporate income tax involved and the formula is very complex. But I guess I would just like to hear, I would like to hear any of the current kind of gaps in ESTMA or an explanation of, I hear this concern about sharing confidential business information with competitors. But is that, I guess famous as a question, is that information not already out there with ESTMA? I don't get the sense that the member is asking for more in ESTMA to be provided. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Hofer, would you like to respond to that?
Well, yeah, I guess the obvious question then for me would be, if ESTMA is providing the level of information you need, then why would you need Private Numbers Bill 29?
Thank you, Mr. Hofer. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, and I guess I will save that question for MLA O'Reilly. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Cleveland, or I see that Mr. Bonnet Rouge does not have any questions. Ms. Cleveland, are you, would you like to say? Nope, I see a head shake there. I myself don't have any questions. I do appreciate the chamber presenting today. As I often have had a lot of conversation with the chamber, I'm well aware of the position here. So I don't have further questions. However, I do want to thank the chamber for presenting. I do think you've raised some valid points here, so I will leave it at that. If you have anything that you'd like to add at the end here, please go ahead, Mr. Hofer.
No, I think that's great. Thanks very much.
Tom, if I may.
Yeah, oh, sorry. Yeah, I should have asked my team here. Kenny.
I'll turn it over to Ben first just because I know you've got a timeline if you've got any additional comments.
Please go ahead, Mr. Chalmers.
I guess I could take a stab at giving a little bit of a perspective on the question. One perspective is that ESTMA was never intended to reconcile the revenues received by, or I guess the money is paid by mining companies and the revenues received by governments. It was meant to provide transparency to the public and stakeholders around the kinds of payments that are being made. There is another framework out there called the Extractive Industry Transparency Initiative, which is a global initiative that many countries have adopted. It has not been adopted in Canada in part because the mineral revenues are provincial jurisdiction, not federal jurisdiction. That initiative is very much focused on reconciling payments made versus payments received and providing public transparency on it. But there is a very clear set of requirements around that as well that is the result of an international consensus. So I just wanted to provide that clarity on, in terms of what ESTMA is intended to do and what is available through EITI. And I guess on the subject of whether there are gaps in ESTMA, I would say no. And I would say that because, as I indicated in my remarks, you know, it is the result of a hard-fought negotiation and consensus between the industry and civil society to decide what is the most useful information necessary for determining or having factual conversations about mineral royalties and mineral taxes paid.
Thank you for that. Before we go to Mr. Reptash, that actually does make me want to ask a question of Mr. Chalmers first. Mr. Chalmers, yeah, if you could explain, then you say that we haven't adopted this Transparency Act here in Canada because it's provincially sort of regulated. However, obviously, in the Northwest Territories, we're in a little bit of a different situation. Do you see any indication we would be going towards adopting that or where Canada's position is on that? If there is already work underway internationally to increase transparency in the mineral sector, is Canada looking towards that as well? Thank you.
Happy to answer that. No, I don't see a significant momentum in Canada to move towards it. I mean, Canada's long been a supporter of the institution that administers ESTMA globally. We are one of the biggest donors to support it. Canada has a history of strong mineral revenue transparency through provincial document, annual budgets and such that provide some degree of visibility on what mineral revenues are received. The challenge with EITI is that a country, a national government comes together with a multi-stakeholder committee at the national level to negotiate what the actual reporting looks like. So there's a framework in place internationally, but it's sort of customized on a national basis between civil society and industries involved and governments. Of course, Canada being a federation, and this is a common position in a number of federations where mining is important. Australia hasn't implemented EITI to the same degree either, and neither has the US. So it would take, in Canada, would take each province and territory to decide and to work towards what EITI reporting looks like. And ESTMA was largely seen as a more effective, more efficient way of achieving the same goal in Canada. And the only cost of that was that we didn't have in place the reconciliation between what's received by government and what's paid by industry, though that was not seen by civil society or the industry to be a fatal flaw in the ESTMA process.
Thank you for that explanation. Yeah, I see what you're saying. We're just such a large jurisdiction. It would be very hard for us to have a nationally sort of board or something, or national governance that fits for all of us. So we know that really well up here in the NWT, that what works for the rest of Canada doesn't always necessarily work for us. So I'm going to pass it back over to Mr. Reptash now for his thoughts. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. In a review of the proposed changes in Bill 29, it seems like they're focused on the Mineral Resource Act, Territorial Lands Act, and the Petroleum Resource Act. There's not a lot of discussion on other industries that royalties are collected on and transparency involved with those. So I'm wondering if you can provide clarification, or if I'm missing something? And I'll focus on quarrying and use the example of Detton Cho Corporation, who's currently in discussions with GNWT and the City of Yalunay for the development of a quarry out by the B-Lake bypasser, the bypasser out by B-Lake. If we're asking the mineral resource sector, petroleum sector, to divulge royalties, I agree with what Tom's saying, that it does somewhat disclose profitability of the mine. Are we then extending that to all other sectors who collect royalties to the GNWT and publicizing those outside of the current, the current reporting requirements that are, that they essentially have boundaries around them, who has access to that information and whatnot? I don't know if that's a, if you're able to respond, or able to let me know what your intention is here?
Thank you for that, Mr. Reptash. I don't have that answer on hand. However, I commit to looking into contacting my departmental counterparts and the minister, and looking into getting that information. But I guess back to you, my question then would be, is do you see this as an unfair measure against one sector versus others? Thank you.
Well, certainly, if, I suppose there's two responses. Yes, we'll be collecting the information for everybody else, or no, we won't. In the former, why aren't they here? Why are they not engaged in this process? And in the latter, why are we singling out the petroleum mineral resource sectors? I think this, in the latter, if we're only focusing on petroleum resource and mineral resource extraction, it sets a precedent for the former, and if we're disclosing this information, it has a larger impact on these private industries. I know right now we're kind of talking about these multinational conglomerates, larger publicly traded companies, but if Detton Cho Corporation was here, I'm sure Paul Gruner would not be happy to share royalty information, telling, essentially disclosing to competitors how their operations are going, and where they're selling their resources to, and not specifically where, but the quantity.
Thank you for that.
The Bill 29 has farther-reaching impacts, I guess is what I'm saying, and I don't know that this committee has evaluated that, and if they have, I'm not able to see that they have evaluated that.
Thank you for that, Mr. Reptash. This is a new role for me, chairing this committee, and it puts me in a weird spot because I'm not always sure how to ask a question as the chair myself. However, I will say as a comment that I have concern about the liability that this bill does open us up to, and whether or not, you know, if we start disclosing information and somebody within the organization then shares that outside of the confidential group, does that now open up the minister to being sued for disclosure of information that she was not supposed to? So more of a comment, I guess, because you can't answer that either, Mr. Reptash, but that is something that's been on my mind with this bill. I'm just going to look around to see if there are any other questions or comments from committee members before we finish off here with the chamber. If there's anything else that they would like to add, now is the time. If anyone wants to wave their hand, I'm just looking at the screens, I don't see anybody. So I think we'll wrap that up here and thank the chamber very much for their time. And was that a hand up, Mr. Chalmers? Or just a goodbye, oh, just a waving goodbye? Good luck to your son and his game tonight, and we thank you. And if we have any follow-up questions, we'll be in touch. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So today, next, our second presentation for this evening will be from Mr. Henrik Falk with the Department of Industry, Tourism and Investment. Welcome, Mr. Falk, and please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good evening. My name is Henrik Falk, and I was wondering if I could get the slides put up on the screen.
Yep, they're up there now.
I'm the manager for Geology and Royalty Policy at the Department of Industry, Tourism and Investment, and I would like to thank, start by thanking you for the opportunity to discuss royalties and some of their workings. Right now, there is a process underway that will be examining this question and many other royalties issues, but tonight I'd like to just provide some background that is pertinent to this bill. And for most of my points, I'll be focusing on mineral royalties. If we can go to the next slide. To start with, I'd like to sort of introduce the topic of royalties a bit. Now, Tom has gone through most of it, so I'll be brief here. But basically, royalties are collected as a way to compensate for the use of non-renewable resources extracted from the land, and they are one of three different tiers of taxation, including provincial taxes and federal income taxes as the other two major tiers. Currently, the mining regulations that we have were inherited at devolution from the federal government, and they've had sort of a long history, and really haven't changed that much through time. Essentially, they're calculated on the value of the production of minerals, and they're based on how much the mine is earning, namely, the amount that remains after the accounting of costs for exploration, project development, construction, and then the actual extraction and production costs. And this is happening in the NWT in a relatively high-cost jurisdiction. The rates we charge are progressive with increasing values, and the, as the value of the revenue gets greater, the amount of royalties and the percentage of royalties increases as well. The rates are commodity-specific, are not commodity-specific, but there are certain sections related to the valuation of diamonds specifically. And the key point is the amount of discretion given to government officials in the regulations is very limited. We can move on to the next slide, please. So currently, the GNWT is enforcing legislation and regulations that are in place, but it's kind of good to understand where these concepts from this regulation set come from. And basically, it's based on Canadian tax law, and Canadian tax law has protected the taxpayer privacy and confidentiality from its initial enactment in 1917 through to the present. The default rule in the Canada Tax Act and all acts that involve self-assessment and reporting is non-disclosure with specific exemption. So royalty filers have a privacy right under the broad rubric of the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms as "legislated rights." There is a requirement that we protect and manage the confidentiality of personal and financial information in accordance to the laws that we administer. And even with respect to non-taxpayer-specific or aggregated data, the court decisions regarding taxes have been quite specific. We have to be very cautious about releasing any of this information. As the information provided by the taxpayer is viewed and treated by the government as sensitive and proprietary business information, where unauthorized disclosure or use of this sensitive proprietary information could have significant impacts for the taxpayer, putting them at a competitive disadvantage, which would also harm their employees and business partners. And really, all royalty systems in Canada use the same level of self-assessment and reporting methodology, so that the idea of confidentiality is always treated with great care. If we can move on to the next slide, please. So currently, we do release the royalties in a collective aggregate form. We make those estimates available for the mains that are published every year, but we are always certain that no single project can be identified by this publication. We also publish the distribution of those royalties, and as much as, much more information is part of an annual socioeconomic report that summarizes the benefits of the mines to the NWT. So a lot of information on royalties is currently available. We can move to the next slide here. As part of a review, we canvassed the Canadian jurisdictions, and the red stop signs are ones that are jurisdictions that do not disclose their information, very similar to our rules. And there are a few exceptions, too. In particular, Quebec and Yukon do publish their regulations, and most of those reflect a more recent updating of the royalty or mining regulations. Ontario, for the most part, does not disclose information, but does after a period of time, allowing a sort of five-year window. Now, there are, we've heard a discussion on the EITI and the Canadian response to EITI, which is ESTMA, and it's one important thing to recognize with ESTMA is that the companies are asked to self-report. So it is not the government disclosing numbers, and it's not the government disclosing how much tax was paid to it. It is the companies disclosing how much tax and royalties and fees that they have paid to governments. This is one of the reasons why Canada is not part of EITI, which requires governments to actually do the reporting, and that would contravene our Canadian tax system. And so Canada, as we've heard, is a major supporter of the initiative. It uses a slightly different mechanism that allows us to fit into the Canadian context to ensure that we still allow the disclosure of the information that's being looked at, while not contravening our own legislative constructs. We can move to the next slide. So what about the future? And currently, EITI is reviewing the royalty regime as part of a multi-phase process, and one that really has been underway since the ascent of the Mineral Resources Act. We will follow a protocol that was developed under the Intergovernmental Agreement on Lands and Resources as part of the Devolution Agreement. Currently, we are jointly, currently, we jointly review new legislation like the Mineral Resources Act, and now the associated regulations with the Intergovernmental Council. During this review process, indigenous governments and organizations, as well as industry and the public, will have a number of opportunities to provide feedback. And as part of this review, we've heard the Chamber of Mines mention the Price Waterhouse Cooper's report that demonstrated a baseline for the current status of the GNWT's royalty system, and where there's other research that's ongoing, including examining best practices from royalties around the world, with the intent of compiling and releasing this research to provide a starting point for other informed discussions with partners and the public. Over the coming months, we will continue engaging with indigenous partners and industry, and we want to hear what people have to say to understand, we understand that this is an important process that impacts everyone, and we would really like to get all of the feedback as part of our review. We're working to provide northern solutions to maximize the benefits for the people of the NWT. And basically, the review that's currently being conducted by EITI may result in the changes that are being examined within this bill, and possibly even broader amendments, including public disclosure. But we see it as a more fulsome process that engages with our indigenous government partners, as well as really examining the topic from all sides, something that I think the topic would benefit from. Thank you very much for your time, and I welcome any questions you might have.
Thank you for that, Mr. Falk. Are there any questions from committee members? I see anyone with their hands up. Mr. Johnson, please go ahead.
Thank you very much for presenting, Mr. Falk, and I'm going to try to be conscientious that you are not the minister and, you know, not get into too many political questions. I guess I just, you know, as a person who fully understands this better than me, in conducting that review, I, you know, we did the Price Waterhouse Cooper, but Price Waterhouse Cooper actually looked at no real royalty numbers, because we're not allowed to share them. Committee will look at no real royalty numbers, because we're not allowed to see them. And I guess, you know, we know that ESTMA does not align with the public accounts, because they're not meant to, that they're different things, as I just heard and learnt. I guess from your perspective, in doing this policy review, is there not some benefit to actually working with real numbers? Because if we have a model of a mine, and we say we're going to get X royalties, but actually they're paying way less, is that not a real-world reality we want to fix? And to me, it can go, so I would just like your comment on whether there's a benefit in working with actual numbers for the purposes of the review. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. You were a little bit breaking up there, but I think I caught your, most of your question. Mr. Falk, do you feel comfortable answering that?
I think I can answer parts of that. The question of royalties and how to assess them has been examined by a lot of different organizations well before the GNWT ever got involved in it. And the consensus on how best to do this has been put out in a variety of different academic journals, policy papers, and government publications. Those are all publicly available on the internet, and very few examples actually involve real-world scenarios. The complexities of an operating mine, the price of commodities that that particular operation is examining right now, those all confound the issue. If you have an operation that suddenly has a mill fire, which has happened, or a strike that goes on, those things will impact the royalties that are not part of sort of a foreseeable mine plan, or they may reflect very local perturbations that are unforeseeable. You don't get a fulsome picture if you're really, if the legislation that you're trying to enact is actually working using real-world numbers, basically. All you will end up with is a bunch of noise. So the modeling is used as a way of standardizing the approach to testing the legislative effectiveness or non-effectiveness. And I think that's about as clear an explanation as I can give for this right now.
Thank you for that, Mr. Falk. Yeah, it is a really complex situation, so I do appreciate trying to maybe put that into plain language for some of us, it's a bit challenging, so appreciate that. Mr. Johnson, do you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, no, thank you. That actually did, is a very helpful response. If we're dealing with real-world examples, we don't even have a, you know, there's about three mines we're talking about, and Norman Wells, that make up the aggregate total, so talking about very specific business cases. And I like the point that odd is happening at one, then the real-world data is not giving you a sense of your framework. And I guess I have one more question, which is, I believe it's Ontario releases the information in five years. I've been trying first to figure out how much giant mine or con mine paid, you know, mines that are long closed, for kind of just an idea of how this worked in the real world. Is there any tool in the NWT where at some point the information can be released?
Yeah, one of the, sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Falk.
Sorry, Madam Chair. One of the challenges is that those, that information was not given to the territorial government. That information was given to the federal government, and we would have to have the federal government's approval to release it. A summary of the giant and con economic impacts was presented as part of an X-Tech volume. There's a paper on it that summarized the operations and some of their socioeconomic impacts. That was That was published, I believe, 2002. I'm certainly happy to include that Warwick Bullen and Malcolm Robb were the authors on that paper.
Thank you for that, Mr. Falk. I believe the committee would like to see that. If you could dig it up for us, we would appreciate that being sent to us. As nobody else has questions, Mr. Johnson, do you have any more?
No further questions. Thank you to the presenter.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mr. Falk, for presenting to us. As I said, it's every time I sit in these, and I mean, I'm the former minister of this department, and I still find it quite complex and difficult at times to follow everything. So I appreciate your time and energy, and I know it was a little bit last minute, so thanks so much for that. Going forward now, we will proceed with Member O'Reilly, who is the sponsor of this bill, and he's going to proceed with his presentation. Thank you, Mr. O'Reilly. Go ahead.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just want to check the sound level, is that okay?
Yeah, you're good.
Great, thank you very much. Want to thank the committee for the opportunity to present on Bill 29. With me this evening is the deputy law clerk, Toby Kruger, who assisted with the research drafting instructions and legal advice in preparing the bill and for this meeting. Also want to acknowledge the work of the Department of Justice staff who assisted with the drafting of the bill. I also want to acknowledge that there was some separation of my role on the committee and as sponsor of the bill. I've always declared a conflict if the bill was discussed at committee, so have not been part of any of the discussions of the committee with regard to the bill. And I've not received all of this, or any of the submissions from committee, although some of those submissions have been shared with me directly. I would welcome the opportunity to review the submissions and the presentations this evening and provide my response to committee in a timely manner. So I just want to go through the slides fairly quickly, and I'm going to try to avoid repeating anything that the other speakers have already covered. So the second slide, please, is an outline of the presentation. I'll probably skip through the plain language summary, but I want to talk a little bit about the background to the bill, the purpose of it, the rationale, a little bit about implementation, consultation or engagement that was undertaken, and I'd be happy to answer any questions from the committee. Next slide, please. Yeah, so the bill does propose small changes to the Mineral Resources Act, which is not yet in force, the Northwest Territories Lands Act, under which the current mining regulations are made, and then the Petroleum Resources Act. So there are already provisions in GNWT and the mining regulations and in the Mineral Resources Act for the use, where GNWT can share royalty information within the government for use in the development and evaluation of policy for GNWT. But that sharing does not extend to MLAs or Indigenous governments. So the bill is, actually allows that sharing to take place, but it's also at the discretion of the minister and subject to any confidentiality requirements the minister could place on that information that would be shared. And I think what this really will do is enable a more informed discussion and input by regular MLAs and Indigenous government into policy regulations and legislation for the management of minerals and petroleum. And I want to make very clear that this bill in no way enables or requires the public disclosure of any royalty information. Thanks, and next slide. So, yeah, GNWT inherited management of lands and resources from the federal government with Devolution in 2014. And I was part of the last assembly when we developed the Mineral Resources Act. And one of the recommendations from, during the development of that legislation was that, you know, the issues around transparency and accountability should be addressed, and there's mention of the Extractive Industry Transparency Initiative that our colleagues from the Chamber of Mines also mentioned. So that issue was identified during the drafting of the Mineral Resources Act back in 2019. Next slide, please. In October of last year, the ITI minister announced that there was going to be a review of the Northwest Territories Mining Fiscal Regime, and Mr. Falk talked about that this evening. And he also mentioned the Price Waterhouse Cooper's benchmarking study that was released on that date. But the work that's been, or the information that's available to the public, and to the public in particular, is there's nothing in, there's no plan for discussion, no proposals to deal with the idea of information sharing or public disclosure. I guess there's a commitment to start to address that, but no concrete plans, schedules, proposals. And certainly, the Price Waterhouse Cooper's benchmarking study didn't deal with that topic in any way. On October 28th, 2020, the minister did state in the House, and you can read the quote there for yourself, this is something taken straight from Hansard, that she is not able to share information about royalties with anyone, except as provided for within the regulations. And we'll have a bit more discussion of that, I think, as we move through. Next slide, please. So want to go into a little bit of background information, and some of this was covered off by Mr. Falk as well. And I did ask the law clerk, law clerks to look into whatever Canadian jurisdictions do with regard to resource royalty information sharing and disclosure. So they looked at a number of other Canadian jurisdictions where there's large resource extraction sectors. And it's very clear, as Mr. Falk indicated, that all governments take some steps to protect confidentiality of royalty information. In Alberta, all royalty information, though, is available for release under access to information provisions after a five-year delay. In Ontario, there is provisions for sharing of royalty information within the government for use in the development and evaluation of fiscal policy for the Crown. And you'll see that, you'll note that that's actually very similar to wording to what's in my bill and what's actually already in the mining regulations and in the Mineral Resources Act. So I think the Ontario legislation probably served as the model for what we already have in place and what I'm proposing in my bill as well. Quebec does allow for the disclosure of information with regard to each mine in terms of the quantity and value of the ore that's produced, royalties paid, other monies that are paid to the provincial government, rehabilitation and restoration plans that are approved, and how much financial security the government, provincial government actually holds. So it does actually go a step beyond what's in the federal legislation as discussed by Mr. Chalmers. In the Yukon, as I understood and the work that had been done by the law clerk, there are no provisions to share or disclose royalty information in any way, and that's found in the Quartz Mining Act. Next page, please. So we've already heard a lot about the Extractive Sector Transparency Initiative, which does allow for public disclosure of payments made by companies to governments. That's not what my bill does in any way, but it is part of a worldwide movement to work towards greater public disclosure, and then so the public can have an understanding of the contribution of the extractive sector. This initiative's been implemented in 55 countries. It's supported by 68 companies, including Rio Tinto and Anglo American, and those two companies actually operate two or three diamond mines here in the Northwest Territories. Canada has implemented in a fashion the initiative through the Extractive Sector Transparency Measures Act, and it is a self-reporting system, as Mr. Chalmers noted. But there are problems with the consistency and the quality of the data. Each company gets to use whatever reporting period it wishes, according to its financial statements or requirements. And certainly, when I've looked at the data, it's very difficult where there's a mine that's jointly operated or owned, because each company can report the payments that they make to governments in different ways. There seems to be some confusion over what is a royalty versus a tax, and some of the data that I've seen, it's not clear, and it's not very consistent. So the bill that I've drafted, though, is consistent with international efforts to improve disclosure, but it does not require or even allow public disclosure of resource royalty But what I think, as I said, so that's not addressed in my bill, but my bill is consistent with efforts to improve access to information by decision-makers. So just want to talk a little bit about perhaps what the bill does. And this is, it does amend existing resource management legislation, and I think that this will help facilitate certainty that resource royalty information can be shared with regular MLAs and Indigenous governments, subject to any restrictions that the minister wishes to place on that sharing of information. And it's, again, totally at the discretion of the minister. And if MLAs, Indigenous governments did have access to information on royalties on a confidential basis, I think it would enable us to better participate in the review of and development of policy regulations and legislation, and all of that can be done without breaching confidentiality. And we all know that MLAs do receive confidential information on a regular basis, is part of the way that we do business within our consensus government system. We regularly get tax information, policy proposals, information evaluating our programs and services, all of which is given to us on a confidential basis to ensure that we can make better informed decisions together. And that's, I think, what this bill is designed to really do. The bill does not create any new powers with respect to mining and petroleum activities. It doesn't create any new regulatory structures. What it does, it does not allow MLAs or Indigenous governments to access any proprietary or financial information that's held in the private sector that has not already been disclosed to the government. And by the way, what is disclosed to our government in the terms of royalties? There's a royalty return form that's available on the ITI website. It's six pages long, and the companies fill in the amount of various allowances, depreciation that they are claiming, and so on. That's the only information that ITI holds. And it may be of some value to MLAs and Indigenous governments to better understand those allowances and depreciation, how those are treated, and maybe model some of that data during the review that's ongoing now. But the way that the legislation reads, the minister is prohibited from sharing any of that information right now. So lastly, again, my bill does not require or allow for public disclosure of royalty information. Next slide, please. Thanks. Look, I don't want to spend a lot of time looking at this bill, but the first two lines of this slide actually show wording that is already in the Mineral Resources Act and in the mining regulations. So what's already in our legislation and regulations, it says that a person may disclose information of a confidential nature for use in the development and evaluation of policy for the GNWT. That means that the information can already be shared within the executive branch of government, with cabinet, outside of ITI, the people who calculate and manage royalties. That information can be shared within the government, but it cannot be shared with us as regular MLAs or Indigenous governments, even on a confidential basis. So if you see that the wording that's already in the legislation, what I am proposing is adding a couple of sections, or one section to each of the Mining Mineral Resources Act and the mining regulations, that would allow for the sharing of information at the discretion of the minister with MLAs and Indigenous governments. And the minister can also place any restrictions on further disclosure, protect the confidentiality of that information. So the wording that I've adopted is actually adapting and building on what's already in the legislation. It's broadening the circle of information sharing to include MLAs and Indigenous governments on a confidential basis so that we can be better informed and involved in the review of the royalty regime moving forward. And I just want to add one other point on this. You'll see that this provision in the mining regulation, section 76.3, the second line there, that was actually added to the mining regulations on June 1st, 2018. So it's a relatively new thing, but it was already added into the regulations. So it's been in effect for three years, but it was a recent addition, so it allows information sharing within the government. I've already said that the first point on here, in the second slide, I've already mentioned the minister has indicated she cannot share information with MLAs and Indigenous governments. So this bill would really just enable the information sharing to be extended to MLAs and Indigenous governments at the discretion of the minister and subject to any confidentiality. I just want to add one other point, that when I was thinking about this bill and how to resolve this problem of information sharing, I thought about just drafting the bill so that information could be shared with MLAs only. But I thought, you know, if MLAs can get this information, or could get this information at the discretion of the minister and with confidentiality protection, why shouldn't Indigenous governments get it as well? So that was my rationale for including Indigenous governments. And I tried to find the least intrusive way for the information sharing to take place, where the minister still has the discretion whether it happens at all, and the minister can also specify how the confidentiality of the information can be protected. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the problem really is that there's no provision to share information with MLAs and Indigenous governments now in any way. All we have access to is what is available in the public accounts, the main estimates. And there's no publicly available timeline or proposal to actually change that in any way. So I'm not sure how this royalty review, or the mining fiscal regime review can actually take place, where we can actually meaningfully participate in that review. The sharing of this kind of information is consistent with open and transparent government and provides greater certainty in the development of new policy regulations and legislation. And it's pulled some of the conventions that we already have in place with regard to how our consensus government system works. I thought that it would be more important to amend the original legislation rather than allowing regulation-making authority, which would require later development of regulations. So that's a little bit about the rationale for the bill that I've developed. Next slide, please. Thank you. Just a few words here about implementation. The bill would allow MLAs and Indigenous governments to have access to royalty information that's already in GNWT's possession. We're not talking about digging into companies' books and so on. It's only information that's already held by GNWT, and it's not about public disclosure. There'd be no changes to the regulatory regime around mining or oil and gas development. There's some of the departments that are responsible for various regulation of the oil and gas and mining sector, and I'm not going to read that off for you. I don't believe there's any financial implications for the government of the Northwest Territories because all kinds of confidential information is already shared with us on a regular because all kinds of confidential information is already shared with us on a regular basis. And the last point there is there's no additional information requirements or reporting required on the part of the resource sector. And I don't believe that there's, the information cannot be shared with competitors as a result of this bill. And I don't believe this kind of reporting is already done through the, the annual royalty returns that are filed for ITI. So there's no new reporting requirements here and confidentiality is protected and as subject to whatever requirements the minister may put in place. Next slide, please. Want to talk briefly about the engagement that I undertook on the bill. And, you know, regular MLAs, we have limited resources that are available to us and only certain times in which we can get legislation into the House. So, but I did provide regular MLAs and cabinet with a copy of the bill and a briefing note 27 days before the first reading and invited any comments, concerns, proposed changes to it. And I had no written responses on that. I will, there was no consultation carried out with indigenous governments before the first reading of the bill, given the limited resources, as I, I mentioned before, and the tight timeline for drafting an introduction into the House. But after the bill was tabled in the House, I did share, share the bill with a briefing note with the Intergovernmental Council and, which is the organization for indigenous governments have signed on to the devolution agreement. But I also shared the bill and, and the briefing note with non-indigenous, non-IGC indigenous governments as well. I did not receive any written responses to those, those letters that were sent out. I did have informal meetings with indigenous government staff and advisors over the summer. And I can talk about that if you like. And I offered to meet with the NWT Nunavut Chamber of Mines. And given that the minor nature of the changes that are proposed and the ability that the minister has full discretion over whether any information is disclosed and the minister can impose any confidentiality requirements that are necessary on that, I don't predict that there's going to be any impacts as a result of the bill, except better public policy. So with that, Madam Chair, I thank you for the opportunity to present and happy to try to answer any questions that the committee members may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Reilly. I believe we have Mr. Johnson first with some questions. Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Emily O'Reilly, for presenting. I, I guess my first question is, you know, I can log on to ESTMA right now and I can go see what Akati paid and see that they had a bad year one year and then they paid 10 million another year and then eight another. And, you know, I can, I can go look up right now to ESTMA what they are paying in royalties. And I guess my question is, information which is already specific not sufficient for us to conduct the review that we're doing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Johnson, could you just repeat your question? You broke up there a little bit at the beginning of it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to try keeping my camera off and maybe that helps my internet. My, my question is that I can go to ESTMA now and I can look up the mines in the Northwest Territories and, you know, see what they are paying in royalties. And, and my question is, why is that information not sufficient? Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Mr. O'Reilly.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thank you for the question. And yeah, I've, I've looked at that data. I compiled it. I actually tabled it in the House. I, I found it very difficult to actually compile it, let alone understand what it really means, especially when it came to, say, the, the Akati Mine, which is 40% owned by, or was owned by Dominion Diamond and 60% by Rio Tinto. Both entities reported paying, I think, some royalties, but it wasn't clear how to combine those, those figures in any way. The same thing with the Gachukue Mine. Part of the, the payments were, are found in the Anglo American filings versus the Mountain Province. They have different reporting periods as well. And as I think Mr. Chalmers said, those are, represent payments made. It's not a reconciliation of what governments actually receive necessarily. And I think it would be important for MLAs and indigenous governments to actually know how much governments get as, as royalties. But also be able to look inside perhaps the, the black box that is the way that, that royalties are calculated, to have a, a better understanding of how allowances may be used, depreciation and so on, in calculating tho, those royalties and potential adjustments, analysis, modeling that might be done to make sure that we are actually getting a fair share of revenues and maximizing the benefits. And it's unclear to me how we can, how that work can be done when the only available information to MLAs is an aggregate figure of mining and oil and gas royalties. Just not sure how that kind of analysis, modeling, looking at performance can take place without the sharing of some information. And again, it would be completely at the discretion of the minister and subject to any confidentiality that the minister requires. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. O'Reilly. Mr. Johnson, do you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, hopefully my internet works through this question. Yeah, I, I guess I, well, I would just want to make a comment that I have asked the minister multiple times to at least separate out for MLAs the difference between the mining and the oil and gas royalties. I, I guess the oil and gas is, if you separate out, it is clearly just imperial oil, but it, it is confusing to know how much money we're getting from mining for oil and gas, given time. But my, my second question was, on second reading, the Government House Leader, am I coming through clear, Madam Chair?
Sure.
On second reading, the Government House Leader stood up and provided quite strong opposition to this bill. Seems clear to me that cabinet will not be voting in favor. And given that, I, I was wondering if Emily O'Reilly, you had any conversation with the minister of, if there's any world where the, I recognize that legislation exists beyond the one individual minister, but will the minister actually ever share any of this information? Are we not just passing a bill that a minister say, well, okay, good. I could if I wanted to, but I'm not going to. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. O'Reilly?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I think that's a good question from the, the member. I'd hope that the 27-day lead time and an invitation to discuss and comment and, you know, if there's concerns around the bill, I'd hope that that 27 days would have allowed for some discussion of those matters before the remarks at second reading. But I have also reached out to the minister and asked for a meeting in advance of the, the next sitting so that I could better understand what the, if there are concerns and issues. I, I guess it also came as a bit of a surprise this evening. I didn't, wasn't aware that the departmental staff would be making a presentation tonight. And I think I got a little bit more information about what some of those concerns may, may, may be. But certainly I've asked for such a meeting to, to better understand what the, the concerns are. And yeah, I, I would welcome the, the opportunity to have that kind of discussion. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. O'Reilly. You'll go back on the list if you want to, Mr. Johnson. But next we have Ms. Cleveland. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I have three questions if I can fit them in or go back on the list. But my first one is similar to Emily Johnson's first question in regards to duplicating a process or numbers. One of the concerns that we did hear from the Chamber of Mines was having two different numbers out there without kind of the, the process or methodology behind that. And so I'm wondering if in Emily O'Reilly's kind of background research or jurisdictional scans, if there was any kind of process or attempt to lobby ESTMA to tighten their reporting or their process that they use or the way that they record it so that we, instead of having two different numbers floating around, can actually just go right to the source and, and Emily Johnson can, or sorry, Emily O'Reilly can share his concerns about how it's reported and how it's communicated from ESTMA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Reilly.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and thanks for the, the question. I guess I'd like to start by saying, you know, and, and Mr. Chalmers said this as well, that ESTMA serves one purpose, which is to ensure that companies publicly report payments to governments and, including indigenous governments now. That's not what my bill is about. My bill is about information sharing with MLAs. So they're, they're really two very different fish. So, you know, I've looked at the ESTMA data. I think there are some difficulties in trying to compile information on a, on a project level. It's, they each, it's a self-reporting system and it does require some quality assurance, quality control that is provided by, as I understand, Natural Resources Canada. But there are inconsistencies in the way the data's reported and posted. And it is, it is a self-reporting system. Different financial years used by different companies. There is the ability to substitute reporting that may be done for other purposes in other jurisdictions and so on. But that is really about public disclosure. I think, you know, as, as MLAs hear, you know, our interest is in revenues and actually what the government gets, at least in terms of public policy and trying to understand whether there's a fair share of revenues coming to our government or ways to maximize benefits. We need to, we, it would be more helpful for us to actually understand what our government actually receives. And even Mr. Chalmers talked about ESTMA is not about reconciling what's paid and what's received. So they're very two different approaches. And my bill, though, is about information sharing at the discretion of the minister on a confidential basis. It has, it's not about public disclosure. The broader issue of public disclosure, that's something I would expect that we're going to deal with through the, the process that ITI is, has already embarked on. I hope that's answered the question, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. O'Reilly. Ms. Cleveland, do you have a follow-up question?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I appreciate that Emily O'Reilly identified clearly that the bill is for information sharing with MLAs. One of the things that is no secret, especially in, in the media right now, is that MLAs unfortunately have had many breaches of confidentiality within the work that we do within the Legislative Assembly, very frustratingly. We've also heard that breaches of this confidentiality can have a negative detrimental effect to our mining industry. And so I'm wondering if Emily O'Reilly can speak to whether or not the disclosure of this information outweighs the risk to injuring the mining sector in the Northwest Territories. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cleveland. Mr. O'Reilly?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'm not sure I can really answer that question about how confidentiality works or doesn't work in the Legislative Assembly and, and how that might relate to this bill. But, you know, MLAs do sign on to a, a code of conduct where we agree to keep confidential information. There's our consensus government conventions. I quoted one of them in my presentation as well. You know, and I'm not an expert on disclosure and what legal ramifications that could be. But certainly, you know, if people want to, you could have non-disclosure agreements. But, you know, look, we're, we're grownups. We're adults. We sign on as decision makers. We agree to keep confidentiality. And even within the broadened information sharing within GNWT over the last three years, I'm not aware of any breaches that, that have taken place with the sharing of that information, potential sharing of that information outside of the Department of ITI. So I, I just, I try to do my job. I'd like to have information. I'm sure other MLAs feel the same way. And we, we, that's the kind of system that we work within to try to make the best decisions for the people of the Northwest Territories, while respecting confidentiality and the, the need to operate within that consensus government system. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. O'Reilly. Before I go back to Ms. Cleveland, Cleveland for her third question, I would just like to point you to the CBC website where we're being scolded for our leaks as MLAs. So I have the same concerns about the liability that this would open up our government to should MLAs be given information and that information end up in the public sector of private businesses. Emily Cleveland, your next question? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I just have one more question for Emily O'Reilly this evening. ITI indicated in their presentation and previous that they plan on doing significant consultations with indigenous government in regards to reviewing the Mineral Resource Act regulations. One of the things that they plan on discussing that we know of is disclosure with indigenous governments. And so I'm wondering if this bill actually removes the process of proper consultation with indigenous governments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cleveland. Mr. O'Reilly?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I, I don't think that that's the, the case at all. In fact, I think it'll better enable information sharing during the development or during the mining, review of the mining fiscal regime where some information on royalties at the discretion of the minister can be shared with MLAs and indigenous governments. That would enable us all to have a better informed discussion and reach better decisions about any potential modifications to the, the royalty system. So this is really only enabling legislation. It doesn't cut short any opportunities for indigenous governments, MLAs, to be involved in the development of, of a, a new royalty regime, if that's the decision that's taken. In fact, I just think it better enables us all to participate as part of a wider circle where that information can be shared at the discretion of the minister with appropriate confidentiality. So at the end of the day, I think it's going to result in better decisions and better public policy. And it, it does not cut short in any way, does not affect the legislative development protocol that, that is in place now with indigenous governments in any way. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. O'Reilly. I'm, I'm going to take this opportunity now to ask my questions. So I just want to, if I have this right, we have a legislative work that's going on, a regulation development that is going on that will cover certain areas of this. So I guess my first question would be around, why would we not wait until we finished that work? And just to reiterate the comments made around liability, to me, this is targeting one sector over others that also produce royalties and have a similar type payment regime to the Northwest Territories. Have any of those industries been consulted? Do we not see that this could potentially open up a push for those industries to be disclosing? I think this is opening us up to more liability as a result of us disclosing information that is not ours to disclose. So I guess my question to you is, why would we not wait until we develop the mineral regulations? Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'm just trying to figure out. I think there's maybe three questions there, so points. And I'll try to do my best to address each one of them. So let's talk about the process that ITI has embarked on in terms of reviewing the mining fiscal regime. This issue of ability to share information with MLAs was raised in the last assembly. It was recognized by SCIDI in its review and report on the Mineral Resources Act. It's been raised again in this assembly during the review. I've raised the issue in the House. You saw the response from the minister. There are still no concrete proposals, plans, timelines that are available to the public about how this issue or problem of information sharing is, is to be addressed. The information sharing already takes place within GNWT, within, within, or, and the information is available to cabinet, but it's not available to MLAs. but it's not available to MLAs or indigenous governments. So any information that is shared, as I said, is at the discretion of the minister, subject to confidentiality. So that's what this problem is designed to fix, is that problem of information sharing to enable MLAs and indigenous governments to better participate in the review. If there are other ways to address the problem, happy to hear about them. But there hasn't been anything brought forward yet by the minister. So, and of course, the process has been moving along. So I wanted to try to find a way to address this issue in the least intrusive way possible. And I think that's what this bill accomplishes. You've raised concerns or issues about whether this would apply to other industries. Well, the fact is that through the devolution process, GNWT now has responsibility for lands and waters. And as part of that new responsibility, we devolve. Now we're trying to evolve. And so the focus of my bill was on not just mining, but also petroleum resources. So I don't think it was an attempt to single out any particular extractive sector. Lastly, you mentioned liability. What can I say about confidentiality at this point? It is a cornerstone and at the foundation of consensus government. And if consensus government is to work, we all have a duty to maintain confidentiality. And we sign a code of conduct that provides that as part of the consensus government conventions. So that's the basis upon which we work. And I'm not sure what else I can add, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Member O'Reilly. So let me see if I have this straight. This legislation is somewhat redundant. The numbers are already presented. The minister doesn't have to follow this legislation, even if we pass it. It's ahead of other work that we're doing that does involve intensive consultation with indigenous governments. So, and it signals to the industry that we are not hospitable to them coming here. So really, I don't see any point to this. So maybe the member would like to address the fact of why would we do this now, the push for it now, when that information is already available? And as you've said yourself to this committee, the minister isn't going to do it anyway. Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I respectfully disagree with your assessment of the bill, and I don't think I can add very much at this point. Thank you.
Sounds good. I think with that, we will, you know, my last comment, I guess, would be that I think this does set a very bad legal precedence for other sectors. Thank you. I think we can move on then. I would like to thank all of the presenters for being here today and taking time out of their busy schedules to provide us with this information. I do urge presenters, if they have follow-up information, to contact the committee clerks to provide that to them. Thank you very much for your time. Committee will now take a brief break before we continue with the clause-by clause review of Bill 29, Resource Royalty Information Disclosure Statute Amendment Act. Thank you.